Setting here this morning and then there's not a public discussion time during the workshop. We're going to go into a 10 o'clock overview of the Northern Stowman Douglas Commission that I sent on and some issues with school safety. And that will be at 10 o'clock and then 11 o'clock we'll convene a special meeting of the school board. They're going on a couple of contracts and at that time there will be a time for public comment. So I appreciate all of you being here today. And Reverend Doug Alexander, a good friend of mine and a former school resource officer is here. This is my month for opening exercises, so I've asked Pastor Alexander to come and open us up in a word of prayer. And immediately after that we'll have the pledge of allegiance. So Doug, if you would come up and say a few words. And I tell you what, let's all stand in prayer and pledge, if you will, please.
You want to do a pledge first?
I do.
Okay. Well, let me just thank you Doug and Sam and all of you, everybody in this family, so I can talk like family, right? Well, let's just go before God in prayer. Father, we just thank you today. We just exalt your name. We magnify your name. We thank you, Lord, that we're here today and we're here with friends and this school board. We ask your blessing to be upon this school board and the staff and Sheriff Department and all those that are involved today to, oh, just come up with this good results for Citrus County. We ask your blessing to be upon us. Bless our families. Bless our president. Bless our nation. Bless this county and the schools and the students that we serve. We thank you. We're grateful. Thank you for those that are serving on this board and doing the best that they can. We ask your blessing to be upon them. And we just ask for good results today, great results. And we ask your blessing to be upon all that we do today. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
What is the status of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands? One nation under God, indivisible, with every equal justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Alexander for being here today to open us up in a word of prayer. We have several topics that we're going to go over here in the workshop. There is, we should be in the back of the room if you won't see one of those. And our first item of discussion deals with the school board police department. And who's going to be? Okay. Is this a chair? All right, your search.
Good morning again, I apologize. During our SRO negotiations, when we were negotiating our contract, the board had voted for the district to move forward with the development of a police department. We have received our FDLE number, we have an agency number. We applied to them. We've received an agency number from FDLE. I'm receiving emails from the field agent that is associated with FDLE wanting to know our next steps and offering to come down and meet with us. So as a result of that, we have developed a job description for a police chief and for a police officer. So that's where we're at in the process and we were looking for direction, discussion on what we may be doing to move forward in that direction.
While Susie Swain's coming up to discuss any conversations that we want to have about job descriptions. I think we need to be very clear that, because there's all kinds of rumors out there that have been said by the school board about not wanting the SRO program. And I know from day one that this SRO program is very near and dear to everyone's heart up here in our school system. We value, we respect our SROs. So whatever the outcome is today, it has nothing to do about replacing the SRO program. It's about enhancing school security as we move forward through this because of the things that are going on. So I just think we need to be very clear that there is not one board member up there or superintendent or anyone on our staff that wants to get rid of the SRO program, no matter what the rumor is.
Good morning. I am handing out some changes that we made to the SRO. And then I've got some more. Yes ma'am. Anything that you looked at yesterday is highlighted in red. Any additional changes? On the police chief, there were no changes to.
Just for the sake of the public knowledge is, as board members, we're not able to communicate outside of the public meeting. So we are able to get information from staff and superintendent. So they schedule meetings for us, like I had a meeting with Ms. Swain to discuss these matters. So they meet with us individually so that we're privy to the information. So that when we get into a public hearing, it's not that we haven't seen the information. So that is the way the process works. Also, I did want to point out one other thing before we started. Today, obviously, is election day and I didn't want to mention this to you all, that we had offered to those people that are involved with the election to postpone this meeting. You know, the county commission postponed their meeting for today. But the three board members that were up for reelection this time, myself and Mr. Kenny, Ms. Powers, and Mr. Kenny and I are really kind of opposed, but Ms. Powers has an election, but she asked that we not change meeting dates, that we stay with our regular scheduled meeting. So that's why we are having this meeting today. And I think, you know, I appreciate that. And I just want to make sure that everyone is ready to take these matters.
As I shared, we did make some updates that are in red to the officer job description. The police chief stayed the same as that you currently have, because I know that these job descriptions are presented to you ahead of time. And any questions that you have for me regarding the job descriptions?
So one change on the bachelor's degree in criminal justice or a related field. That was, that was an addition, correct?
Yes, sir.
So all the district police officers will have a bachelor's degree?
Either and, or either two years of experience and a bachelor's degree, or two years of experience or a bachelor's degree.
Is the related fields, can you give me some examples of related fields?
Would be related to criminal justice. If they have a different title coming from a specific university, we would review that.
What about like psychology or social work?
I think primarily we were looking at the criminology and criminal justice field. We did review the, they do not have a specific job description for the SRO. It's a deputy job description, so we did review that. And we took into account seven other districts that have created their own police or implemented their own police force. And we did look at those job descriptions to make sure that we were in line. Either equal or I would say more requirements, additional requirements. In the area, I would say of the, with regards to, we are looking at the bachelor's degree as well?
I'm just curious.
No, that is not, no.
With related fields, and I understand what we're trying to accomplish here, but I'm just thinking, if I had a guidance counselor that's got four years, you know, or two years of experience, four years of experience, or whatever experience, and they decide, you know what, I'm really interested in being an SRO, because a lot of what I've been doing is, you know, the psychological side or the emotional side of taking care of things. And they go into that. Would they be able to meet the qualifications?
If they've gone through the police academy?
If they went through the police academy, would they qualify?
We would have to, we would have to look at that and see.
And that could be related to.
Well, that's, that's the only reason why I think is true. Saying I'm just wanting to, to make sure that in a situation, you know, someone who does have a, you know, a psychiatry degree, a bachelor's degree, they're looking at that. That, because I think we're looking for those types of enhancements. And that's where I was just saying, I wouldn't want to be not having those options for you all. And that's why I just want to make sure that we have that flexibility within the job description.
So why the change in the salary for the pay scale? I mean, we just met yesterday and, you know, we had a big discussion on that. And now you're heading out on the pay scale today.
Correct. We looked, we went back and reviewed what the beginning teacher salary is. And we wanted to make it equitable or equal to the beginning teacher salary. If they work additional days past the 10 month, they would be compensated as extra duty for those additional days or additional duties, whether it be nights, weekends, summer, they would be compensated.
So then how does this compare then with the 12 month salary of a, say, a sheriff?
12 months, Sherry is $38,000, correct? For 12 month beginning salary.
So 12 months, police officer?
For the Citrus County sheriffs, yes.
At zero year of experience.
That is correct.
But then how would this relate our 10 month to what would then a 12 month position under this proposal?
We agreed that we would pay them extra duty, so they would get paid their hourly rate.
So it would just matter as to how much extra duty time?
Yes, sir.
There is required training and professional development during that period of time so that they receive their hourly rate.
Correct. If it does not fit in, our teachers have pre-planning and post-planning days. So that is when the training would be completed. That would be our hope. But if they were not able to complete it within that timeframe, then we would compensate them extra duty.
Yeah, it hit me when you said, when you said that, I'm thinking, I was thinking of 180 day type, but it's 196, which is similar to what an instructional teacher would have.
So I appreciate the work that's been done here to create the job descriptions. And I think they're in good shape right now. You know, my issue is the timing here of us moving forward with the district police department. I think it sends the wrong message. You know, to me, it provides kind of a sense of uncertainty that I'm really not comfortable with. Because we look at our students, our parents, the uncertainty of what's going to happen next. We look at our teachers. We look at the 25 SROs that we have in positions right now. They have that uncertainty, not knowing whether we're going to be starting the police department and changing. I don't feel comfortable with that. We've worked out a deal with the county commission. I very appreciate it. We are all very appreciative. I don't feel we're going to miss the funds. The sheriff has signed the contract. So I'm just saying, for me, it's hard to go ahead and move forward on this. I want to put the idea of the district police department behind us.
That the intention was not to create uncertainty, but to create a place to go if something happened where people didn't agree to a contract or didn't like the contract. And we know we have to have something. We cannot have no one at the school. So I think it was trying to create something where the parents could rely on. And I know out in the public that people are talking about that. They are saying that very thing, you know, well, at least we all are looking at that. If something goes wrong, hope it does not, because no one wants it to go wrong. Everyone wants to have their SROs in school. But if something went wrong, let's say the next sheriff who's elected decides he doesn't like SROs at all, gets rid of them all, then what we did, you know, that's what the thinking is.
Yeah, I hear you. And certainly if, if sheriff doesn't uphold his end of the bargain, if the contract is violated, then we have to be ready to act. We have to be ready to do something different. But I'm telling you, we can approve that job, these job descriptions at that time. We can approve and move quickly. The work is done. To me, there's no need to move forward right now with this. We're in there, we've got a new contract. There's going to be changes that are going to take place in the next legislative session. I've got questions about a guardian program. And I want to, you know, I would like to have a job description if we were to look at a guardian. That's, we're too early for that as well. And so for me, not knowing if we're doing a 10 month contract, 11 month contract, 12 month contract with a police officer, this pay scale for a district police chief is for a 20, is what I see as a 25 person department. If there's going to be a district police chief, a school board police chief that has three or four or five people assigned, then this pay scale is way off. And that, we would have to adjust that accordingly to follow more in lines with a small town police chief. So those are, those are the issues that I see. If we know there's, if we know that there's a violation of the contract, if we know that things are changing, which I certainly hope that that will happen. But that's the time we come back together and put this back on the table for discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Doug, don't we, don't we sometimes get the job descriptions for jobs sometime in the future? Just because you, just because you approve a job description does not mean that you're going to run right out and hire somebody right now. And however, if the job description is approved, and then when we get ready to hire somebody, we know what they're doing.
You see, that's, that's my thoughts too. Five months ago, we thought we had, you know, we were told guardian, flat no. It was not an option. And we met with the county commission and the sheriff. So every other possibility to reduce costs was a no, 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 no. So I'm kind of agreeing with Mrs. Prime. This is something that I think we need to put in place so that we have control over any unseen. We work very, very hard. Every time you came back after discussing, you said, if we, if we agree to this, we've got a deal. And then we found out we didn't. You came back after talking again. I think if we agree to this, we've got a deal. Five months, it was not this board that was stalling the negotiations. It was not. And so I think we do need to have something in place so that our SROs don't have to wait until after the day of school starting to know that they have a job for the year.
I want to address a couple of things that you said. Number one, I agree with Mr. Dodd about the salary for the police chief. However, if it were the intent the board gave us, if you all were to improve, which we already had, if you voted for one, we'd have to have you all to make a motion to stop that, because we already have our numbers and things in place. If it were the intent, probably they'd call to some retired officer to see if they could hire a court conference chief while we're getting things in place. Again, we're not replacing the SRO. This isn't, if something happened to your contract today, if it did, then we would have to go to plan B. It's about getting someone to door a money box, about getting extra duty contracts, about maybe hiring three guys or gals to put one board at each high school. You all know these negotiations have been the worst negotiations we have ever, ever faced. With any contract that we've had to sign, we've had to turn this over. We've asked that, in fact, the sheriff has talked to sheriff's office about putting our sergeants at one at each high school, because that was their idea at the beginning. Now we've been told that that's not going to work well. That piece has to work, because we need space for, for instance, we all approve the PIO and some things like that. We need office space. So that would give us our high school four presidents at the level. There's not lots and lots of communication where things are being passed on to us. And I hate to bring this up, we had a boy who passed away in a car accident. You know how we heard about it? Through the church and through Facebook. And that's how we seem to be getting our information.
Is that consistent with how that's been with any sheriff in the previous?
Always we see phone calls, they vote for sheriff, they vote for our student services. Because see, that's about kids. That's about putting the right people in the right places to counsel these kids and stuff like that.
And what about intel? Because that, you know, I hear from people and administrators that there's still intel that's not being shared. So that concerns me. And Chairman Dodd, I agree with what you're saying. But we have a duty, that we have only three options in this state to meet both the letter of the law as well as the intent of the law. And that is guardian program, contract within LED, I'm sorry, law enforcement agency, thank you, I'm sorry. Or with, with having our own police department. To me, I think as long as I'm a board member, we will have SROs. That's not an issue. What the question may be is who's managing those SROs? I have no problem with us having the sheriff doing that. But it's been really hard the last five months. It's been difficult hearing things said about us as sitting board members. It's been difficult to, in the community, have uncertainty among the administrators of not having information and intel on their own schools. We can't have that. We cannot have the fact that our superintendent is not being given information about situations that are happening that are critical to the operations of the school and the safety of the children. That can't continue. And if that's going to continue, then something's going to have to change. And we need to be ready, because I believe it's been said by this board, we shouldn't, we shouldn't just all of a sudden come up with job descriptions. We shouldn't just all of a sudden react and then start a police department. Well, I thought this was a way of ensuring that we are being prudent in making incremental steps. I don't think we're saying that tomorrow that we're replacing all of our SROs in our contract with our sheriff's department. I haven't heard the superintendent say that.
I believe some of the issues that we've got, I know the search is working, Major Landhart worked some of these out, but it's just been hard. It's been a, it's been rough. And again, we're not here to replace SROs. I have no intention of replacing our SROs anywhere. Our intention was to add and enhance what we're doing now, if that is what's our goal. I appreciate you calling me. Like, you know, a young man, I wouldn't have known about. Over on the other side of the county, you know what I'm saying?
Mr. Bradshaw, you applied, or the board voted to apply for status to be a police department. And we were issued ORI number. So what's the next process with that? Is there a requirement to have an employee at a certain date or time? Or can that just sit there in, you know, a standby position?
Well, right now, the search is that her agency head, I'm assuming a retired police chief, they will become the actual agency head. But there's, excuse me, meetings that we, that the search, I've been contacted in regards to FDLE coming and doing some training with us as far as getting started with the police department to be able to hire. Or the process of getting place to be or hire police officers. The only way, you would have to, I guess, contact FDLE and ask that the ORI number be placed on the folder or in and at the status.
So by starting a police department, I mean, we're obviously going to have to look at the figures. Look at what the numbers are. But is there a feeling that we're going to be able to save money from the sheriff's extra duty contract? Or where are the numbers? I mean, do we have a cost analysis on, you know, is it, is it going to be advantageous for us to do that from the cost perspective? Do we have any figures on that?
From what I understand, the reason coming before the board today is as a result of the resolution that was signed, would be to put the job description in place. At this point in time, I don't think we are prepared to have a conversation regarding program costs or all the details of the program. We're coming forth, board today to say, here's job descriptions. You signed the resolution. Are you, is it the will of the board for staff to move forward in planning and preparing for a police department? Or is it not? So I think it's too premature to have those conversations. We're not prepared for that at this time. We're prepared to ask if it is your will to approve the job descriptions.
But if we approve job descriptions, isn't our will, is it, will you be able to assume that's our will to proceed with the police department? Or are you saying that's not really the case?
Not at all. What I, what I foresee happening is this. If it's the desire of the board to approve job descriptions today, that gives staff the indication that you're wanting to pursue a police department in more detail. At that time, staff would get together, come back before the board in a workshop situation, saying, here's, here are the options that we have outlined for a police department as we move forward. Just because we approved what, job descriptions today does not encumber the board or staff to open a police department. It is just saying, hey, if we are to do this, the job descriptions are prepared. And they're already been approved. And now we can fast track this and get it up and running.
But technically, we've already, we've already applied for a police department. I mean, we haven't funded it or hired people, but.
That's correct.
We have moved forward with the police department.
And this is the first step in moving forward toward a police department.
Right, right, right. So to me, it's, I mean, we could put it to rest now and say, let's stop the process by not approving these job descriptions.
Absolutely. I mean, if it is the will of the board to put this thing to rest, if we have no job descriptions, then we have no basis by which to derive program costs. By virtue of this job description, as Ms. Swain provided today, we say, okay, now we know that officer's going to call sex number dollars. If the board wants to put an officer in each of our 22 schools, we can extrapolate those numbers out to come up with a rough program cost. Now, we know there is a whole litany of other things that go into costs and considerations when talking about a police department. But by no stretch of imagination is that a light task that lies ahead. But for staff's purposes, today, we need to know, is it the will of the board to have job descriptions in place so we can begin to develop those program costs that you asked for today? That you're asking about today, I should say.
Mr. Bradshaw, is it, and I'm not sure if it's the right person, I think you're the first person to go to. Is it likely that this coming legislative session, and Chairman Dodd, you probably have as much insight as well, to move, that this legislative, this legislative session could change dramatically? Again, school security at every level. And that meaning particularly who could be controlling guardians? And the ability to hire and or have trained guardians through a third party? And so forth?
I know with people in Tallahassee that there's, you know, 726 put together so fast that there's going to be changes that are going to happen. There's one, yeah, obviously rumor mill about, I believe Amber didn't know what was actually going to happen, but that is talk about that people actually have a guardian program. We have control over different sources of funds and where that money is going to go. Just a whole litany of things as far as, as far as, I'm assuming it's just getting limited. We're talking now just about the school safety.
I'm thinking of, yeah, I'm thinking of school safety. And I think, Mr. Dodd, you've talked to the same thing. We need to be prepared that there's a lot of changes that could happen. The way funding is done, who's in control of that. And I, I get the feeling that as this, and I've had the same conversation with legislators. All of this may start getting defined by the state before it's all over. There may be structures or there may be menus of circumstances better than that we currently have. So I say that because I think, when I think about the idea of saying, we're going to form an entire police department, I would be with you, Mr. Dodd, that I'm not. form an entire police department, I would be with you, Mr. Dodd, but I'm not sure where we'd be with that as far as tomorrow going and doing that and saying to our SROs that are currently there, by the way, there may be another option in town. I don't know that we're anywhere close to that. Because I really think this legislative session is going to tell us a whole lot of new things. And we may be making, and I agree, and so I would say that to me, again, I see this as just a very incremental, I hope, small step, not necessarily that provides us options, not one that commits any, I hope that's the case.
I hear you. The Office of Safe Schools, you played with FLE, was just an establishment, Mr. Kelly, Amy Kelly, who was over at FLE, in charge, the director, that has not been there very long, so there are probably a lot of information coming out of the Office of Safe Schools.
But the other argument for that, that's a great argument, the other, no, the other argument is maybe we're doing something we shouldn't have already been doing. Maybe we should be leaning, you know, instead of, instead of moving forward, maybe we should just be on pause, and maybe we should, you know, keeping staff far away from having to deal with the formulation of the police department.
And I think that's a fair question, I think that's a fair response.
And I think that's why this is called your day, because staff has spent hours and hours and months negotiating the SRO contract, more hours than we probably can handle in our current bill of obligations, guard and strength, and they all, they're all in the contract. We're good either way. We just need to know the direction of the board, because if we use job descriptions and going forward, we will probably look for a hot time police chief, we'll probably hire men and women for half our duties or for extra duty, those types of things, and we may or may not have one more officer at each high school. We just need to have the direction because we need to know, do we move forward, the staff will, today, will tell us where to go. So that's all we need, is clear direction on what you all want to say.
I can't remember any time we've had to make the major decision like this, that we haven't had a backup plan, that we haven't had something in place. And I don't want to have a time now. I think this is a backup plan. It's not, we aren't looking at it as a replacement. We are looking at somebody, we have to go this way for whatever reason, legislature says it, the sheriff says it, whatever happens, we still have a plan. And I think one thing you need to emphasize more along the, everybody, the commissioners, the sheriff, everybody, is that y'all had so many months to get this in place and you haven't. Well, we know we were negotiating all the time, we were working on it all the time, but the public doesn't know that. And they think that all three groups just didn't move fast enough. Well, I don't want us not moving fast enough. I think having this in place, all it is, is a job description, like we always do with every job. We might do it three months ahead of time, six months ahead of time before that job is ever posted and hired, but we want it in place to know what we want. Well, this time, I want it in place to know the job description of this sheriff, the police officer, and the person heading there, the major police officer, whatever the title is, like the sheriff. I want that in place. And we don't have to go there, but it's in place just in case.
Five months of off, 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 to me. I couldn't stand it. I need, I need a backup plan.
And I'm, I think it's a prudent move that we do have a backup plan. And I think, because that camera's been going on every one of our meetings and every one of the meetings I know, I personally said, SROs are so important to our school. What has kept our school safe, and I'm so proud to be in Cypress County, because we had SROs in our schools long before Stoneman Douglas. And I was shocked to find out that other counties didn't have one officer. So it's always been supportive of the SRO program. But we've also been faced at the last meeting with the money problem tremendously. And so I think it's prudent of us to have other avenues when we're talking about spending $17,000 last year for cash bank pickups, and now all of a sudden it's going to be $50,000. And so I think it's prudent. We also have to buy, I'm, safety is so important, I'm not saying that, but we also have to buy programs for our iPad, we have to buy classroom textbooks, we have to pay teachers. And we're going to be faced next year with not only this negotiation, but, you know, this is the last year of our teacher raise, so we're going to have to give our teachers a raise next year. So it's prudent of us to be able to say, you know, we can't keep spending money for cash pickups. I can't justify that and then tell a teacher that we don't have enough money to give them a raise next year. We have to watch the dollars we spend. And I've been in this county since '73, and this school board, going way back to Roger Weaver, has been so prudent and so careful with their money, that we just have to have, we have to have something in place so that we can hire people less expensively than we can hire sheriffs to pick up our cash pickups. And if it's requires the job descriptions, I think we need to do it.
Well, I will say this, we've got to be fiscally prudent.
Yes.
And I will, I want to see the numbers, because I don't think you can make the numbers work on the, you know, we've got to be careful, we don't sit out there complaining and buying fault with the increase in costs, and yet we then vote to fund a program that's going to cost a whole lot more than what the increase is. That's what we have to be careful of, because fiscally, being fiscally prudent, I can't see the numbers working here. Okay? And we're talking about really saving tax dollars. When you talk about personnel costs, and you talk about sworn law enforcement officers who are a much higher cost in the retirement system fund, the benefits and costs for sworn officers are much greater than a regular class employee, according to FRS. There's a lot of cost associated with this. And so I don't see how we can make the numbers work, but...
I'd see the numbers.
We have to see the numbers.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And you're right. But remember, we've just dealt with five months of a contract where I don't necessarily think that being fiscally prudent was at the center of all of those conversations. And I say that because, Mr. Dodd, you've done a great job trying to remind us of those times, and I know behind the scenes, many not realize how much work you've tried to do to balance that very issue, even when it's been hard. And I think you have appropriately helped us spend more on school safety than maybe we were prepared to at the initial onset of this.
Well, the truth is...
And I don't mean that in a bad way. I'm saying I think you've tried...
Well, the truth is, because we didn't have a lot, we had pretty much the truth.
But that's why, that goes back to why I think we're feeling we need an option. I do have to say one thing, and Ms. Brian, you did an excellent job saying, this has been a hard five months. This has been one of the toughest five months of any issue that I can remember in my time on this board. And I don't think it's because people intended to create challenges with each other, but it certainly took place. But there was one shiny moment recently that I can share, that I think is important that we keep centered about. And it was from an SRO. And I don't think that surprises any of you, but it was in the day before we opened our schools, an SRO was asked, was there anything that they needed, they wanted to share with faculty as they were getting ready to open school? And that SRO just said, yeah, I just want you to know, I'm here, I'm taking care of you. And if anybody else wants to show up the next day and join me in taking care of this school, I'd be happy to have them join me. But one way or the other, I'm going to be on this job. That's really what this is about. We need to be focused and stay focused on the right thing, and that's our students and our schools. And whoever's willing to step forward to do that, we need to be ready to make that and continue to have that happen.
Last week, I met with a parent group, and Hallon, your parent's name, called into the school because she was scared to say what she said and shared. But she had a concern, and she mentioned it, every parent in there had this concern, that it was bus time, pickup time in the afternoon, and the SRO was in some of the area, and she felt like he should be or she should be at the bus area. And Mr. Long explained to her that we were holding a meeting that we would ask SROs in any certain area because we rejected SRO. So we talked to the group about whether or not we could hire them or not, we didn't know that, and that we would be able to, maybe in the future, hire other law enforcement women and put them as added staff on campuses. So they were full support of that, they wanted to come today, and I told them they did want to come today, but I would still confess that on you all, that they do feel like that anything could be enhanced. And I will tell you, every one of them loved the SROs and their programs, because well, before those days came in, there were rumors from areas that we wanted to give the SRO program. And you all were called deceitful, you all have been called dishonest, you all have been said that you didn't want the program, and this would maybe be an alternative to help enhance the SRO program.
We are good either way.
Okay, board members, this is a workshop, obviously, so we're not going to vote on it now, but we do have it on the agenda for the special meeting, right, to vote on the job descriptions. So, you know, now is our chance to continue the conversation. We'll have to have a motion during the special meeting to go a certain route. And so, you know, again, I am good to continue discussion if there's anything else that needs to be said, any other questions? All right, very good. Thank you very much. We have a time served at 10 o'clock, we have a little more time here, and we do have a health insurance update on the workshop agenda, so is that, anyone's going to cover that tomorrow?
All right, assemble board members, Mr. Moore, Mr. Bradshaw, and Tom, let me come up here today and explain to you a little bit about, update our self-insurance fund. We're going to start right there, get, all right? Claims through July are estimated claims, what we budget for is about $991,000. You can see, we've had a few rough months. May was one that we really weren't planning on. If you turn to the next one, you can see the claims breakdown through June. We just recently, just the other day, just got the claims breakdown from July, it's reasonable they aren't on here. But you can see the total, they are medical versus pharmacy. We're trying to work, do what we can to get the pharmacy claims down as much as possible through the wellness center, and such as that. And if we go out and do our benefits show to our schools, we're going to be talking about some other options that people have as far as pharmacy costs go.
If it's pharmacy, then they put the wellness.
No, ma'am, that is just, that is out of pocket pharmacy, through outside pharmacies just been, okay? Our average claims through July, through each year, you can see that this year, we're a little bit above where we were last year. We had a very high January due to a claim that had happened earlier in 2017 that actually got paid in January, so that's kind of pushed us over that little bit. But we're still below our, also, we were expecting for claim each month. Okay? Next, we just showed you the same information on the graph forms, you can see where we're just a little bit above that, still below where we were a few years ago. Way too many high claims, okay? This next slide is just a very quick comparison, the number of plans that we had and the amount of claims we had per plan last year. We're looking at about $3,657 per plan on claims through July. This year, it's higher. Now, the claims numbers aren't that much higher, but that ratio is, because we have fewer people on the plans. If you take a look at that, you can see that, that's something I've been working on, I've been visiting all of our schools, explaining to people the benefit of us being able to have more people on our plan helps offset those costs, dilutes the costs, if you will, per person, gets that ratio back down. I was actually at two schools this morning, talking about that to our members, so that way they can understand exactly where our costs come from and how, what they can do to help lower those costs for everyone, okay? Our premium revenue, as you can see, our premiums are much higher than they were last year, this time, which is great, that's really helping us, A, with the claims, B, also make sure that we're actuarially sound, and create that reserve that the actuary said that we needed to have, okay? Now, this is the quarter one monthly breakdown, that has not changed since your last update, so I'm going to go to the quarter two. If you take a look, you can see that the premiums in June, much higher than other months, but then again, we have more paychecks in June for our 11-month employees and whatnot. As you can see, May, we had that bad month of premiums, so we are actually in a deficit in May. In June, turned that back around, even with the high claims, we still had more than enough premiums to cover that amount. Utilization for the wellness center, this is where we really get the most money of our buck with our self-insurance fund. Avery's Wellness Center, as you can see, is 80% utilization in June, we were 71% of that utilization. Beverly Hills was at 85% in June, okay? 90% of that usage was our members and their dependents. I would like to see the utilization higher, of course, at both of those centers, but of that utilization, we are using quite a bit of it ourselves, which helps keep the claims down on the plane, okay? All right, now this one, that's good, if you know, here, here, go ahead.
I've got a question on that, on the utilization.
Utilization, yes.
Yes. So that is utilization of the total number...
Available appointments.
Available appointments.
Yes.
Okay. And does that, does that mean that the sheriff's office has the other available, is there a correlation there, if we use 71% or if we use 90%?
The 80% that was used, 71% of it was ours, we were using.
I got you, okay. So of the schedule, eight out of 10 appointment slots were filled.
Yes.
Basically, right, 80%.
Yes.
And basically, seven or 7.1 of those 10 were from the school district.
If you took that eight, 7%, 70% of that eight, it's 5.6.
I got you.
Now, it's medical and ancillary, so blood draws, and all of those are combined into one, it's not just medical.
Right, it's not, it's not a whole of 78%?
Yes, sir.
I got you.
Okay. The no-shows, as you can see, a dramatic decrease in the number of no-shows that we've had for the past couple of years. We did have one bad month in May. I actually sent out an email to our members who have our health insurance to let them know that that's not how we need to do things. And since then, we've gone right back on track with just a few number of no-shows. We have people actually, talking to people at their schools, saying, hey, don't forget about your appointment, A, if you have an appointment, let your administrator know. So we are getting that word out, and people are really trying not to do that. We've had 26 payroll deductions, I just had a few more put on my desk on Monday, so there will be some more added to that. No retirees, quite a few spouses, who I know that's going to be a fun conversation whenever the other person gets that phone call, but that's not my issue with that. So, but the no-shows have improved quite a bit, dramatically. And still, you know, the $25 no-show fee is not necessarily drawing a lot of revenue, but it does, you know, help drive that point home, okay? Any questions on that one?
Yeah, any more? I've got a question. How many claims hit that threshold for reinsurance? I mean, how many, how much reinsurance?
I believe through July, I believe we've had, I'm trying to remember, it might be three or four that have hit the symmetric to reinsure.
Exactly.
We have, we have quite a few that are coming close to that, but as of now, we only have three or four that have hit that.
Is there any product plan that we're hearing or that we should be surveying that if we... if we offered, might increase that membership base? I mean, you know, at one point, we looked at the, I can't remember, was it? The spousal one, and I don't know if that was as successful as we hoped it to be, or it hasn't been, I can't, my memory switched a little bit.
Well, yeah, in a second, I actually have another presentation that talks about the plans. Yeah, I'll be happy to talk about that then, if you'd like.
Yep, that's worth it.
If that makes sense. This is just the other day on the fund balance and whatnot, but I have another presentation I'm going to give you in just a second, on the actual plans that we're proposing the rates for.
Oh, wait, your time is up.
Don't get too fast. So, are you ready for me?
Yes, let's go.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
There's nine minutes, so.
Okay.
We can certainly come back to yours.
Absolutely, yes.
I won't limit you to nine minutes.
This one's not going to be very long either, I can, I can tell you that.
Okay.
There aren't very many slides for, all right, so, oh, I'm sorry, it's the wrong ones, I have to take you a second. Okay, so, this, real quick, this is just to show you what our costs would be if we did not have the wellness center, okay? We could estimate that our claims would probably be upwards of $6 to $7 million higher without the wellness center, just based on pharmacy and medical costs, okay? So, just a, very quick to show you the benefits of that, okay? Reminder of our board match that we currently have, the national average for the trend for health insurance premium increase is 10%, across Florida it's 11%. So, what we're proposing is that for this year, through our management of the plan, we're proposing a 4.5% increase across the plans. That's less than half of the national average and well below half of what the average in Florida is, okay? Now, with that 4.5% increase, okay, there will be no changes to the plan, no increase in deductible, no increase in maximum out-of-pocket, okay? Our bottom plan, 5172, which is still mandated by the Affordable Care Act, hasn't changed, still no access to the wellness center on that one. The rates, and I'm going to, I got, I got to hand out for you here, so you all can digest this at your time, okay? Look at the one, to the far right is what they're currently paying, just to the left of that is what it would be with a 4.5% increase. There's no additional board match, no negotiations right now with CCA, I negotiate tomorrow with insurance, before we can start talking about any change in the board match. But a 4.5% increase, right now, for our 5168 single, which is where 82.5% of our employees are, would be an increase of $29.90 per month, with no additional board match.
Oh, I'm sorry, which plan is that for?
That would be 5168 single.
Okay.
That's the one where 82.5% of our employees are on that plan.
Right, and so, it's going to go from 664 to 694, is that what I'm reading?
Yes. But then there's a $512 board match. So, they're out, they're out-of-pocket per pay period right now is $76.10, so that would increase to $91.05, a change.
But we haven't negotiated the board match.
I just been with CCA yesterday, and being with insurance tomorrow, we're in the process of that right now. So, an additional board match would bring that additional cost down.
And that 5168, is that most of our?
Oh, yes, ma'am. It is definitely most of our people.
So, it goes back to that? Is there something we?
We've looked, whenever we have it, like, say, employee plus one, what happens with employee plus one, the plus one is, has the same liability as far as insurance goes as a family does. So, employee plus spouse, plus one, liability wise, it doesn't change the expected, claims ratio is exactly the same for that.
Is there anything as far as, they, sometimes we'll hear from staff, well, so-and-so's got a plan that is so much better than the school boards, and of course, then I'm like, well, let's compare apples to apples, and let's look at the, you know, but, but I'm, hey, I'm, I have no problem saying we'd be open to offering a plan if we could have members that want to do it, because we benefit by members earning plans.
I actually went out on the marketplace over the summer to see what the rates were, to see if I could find cheaper rates on the marketplace, take them to our broker, and by far, ours were so much cheaper. Not just cheaper premium-wise, maximum out-of-pocket was much less one of our plans compared to 5168 family, which is where 88% of our families are. The maximum out-of-pocket for that plan was, you know, $11,000, which would be catastrophic to a family that pays $11,000. Ours is six, so, which is, it's a higher than I'd like, but it's a big difference between that paying $11,000 for the plan takes on the rest of it, plus people do not have $11,000 if there's something horrible that happens. So, trying to compare apples to apples is very difficult, but our rates were much lower than the marketplace was elsewhere. And again, I've had people say, why don't we combine with other groups that have lower rates? Well, they have to agree to take on our higher rates.
Right.
And I don't, I would not take on someone else's higher rates to make ours go up, bring theirs down. So, I don't, there aren't too many groups who are willing to take that off.
And I have the, the groups that are paying the higher rates coming to us saying, why can't we join your group and get this? So, we, we have both sides of that.
Right.
That happen.
And, you know, I really appreciate the communication with the teachers and staff, because it's, it's hard to understand, and they see that bottom line.
I know.
It's, it's very disappointing to me to see these increases that, you know, but it's, like you said before, it's not just here, it's throughout the country, that these insurance costs continue to go up. So, I mean, I hope we can get a, get a negotiating board match, you know, because I hate to keep passing on these increases. So, what do we have last year? What was our increase last year?
8%. 8.8, I believe it was.
8.8%?
Yeah.
You know, and so, what was our net after, where our match, though?
Right. But the match was up. I mean, no, it did not cover the entire amount.
Right, but I, I mean, it was not as...
No, it was, it was...
Tried to cover a good portion of it, dumping housing us every day.
It was $26, the match was.
We all should cover that.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, it is, it's a balancing act for them, too, because there are some members that don't, or get insurance, because they may get it from their spouses, and so, it's like, we don't benefit if you give them that. I mean, it's, it's, it's tough for negotiating.
Which is why, whenever I'm out there, I'm trying to explain to people, we have more people on the plan, we keep the increases down to a bare minimum, because it spreads out those costs, brings in more revenue. We don't have to keep increasing to those people who are on the plans, if there's more on there, actually, the increases can be down to a minimum.
And I have to commiserate with our, our teachers, because they're, through the guy who's in class, and I don't know where the board match was, but I know that pay increase wasn't enough to cover the insurance, so we actually worked the next year at a loss. So, this is very important to the teachers.
Oh, yes, ma'am, my, my, so, we, we do whatever we can, as, we're very cognizant of that, whenever we come up with these rates, as to what, what people have to pay, not just our teachers, but our support staff as well.
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and pay.
Okay, is there any, are there any other questions? Anything else? Assembly, anything else?
Okay, you all got a hard copy, so we're going to just, okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, folks, all, appreciate it.
Okay, well, we're at 9:59, we have a time served for 10, so we're right on time, and, yeah, so, I get my business done, and now, I appreciate, Sandrowski, if you can come and get the video out, or get that going. So, this is a snapshot of the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Public Safety Commission, which I sit on. We've been in Broward County, we've had eight days of meetings so far, and we're scheduled for September 11th, February 15th. The commission has to have a report to the governor and legislature by January 1st, so we're working diligently to have that put together. I thought it would be good for you all to see a portion of one of the meetings where we had 11 different commissioners speak and share their ideas and their thoughts, and as the commission meets to come up with solutions, that's what we do at the board level for our county. And so, I thought it would be valuable to the board to see, to listen to this discussion. And I continually put out there that we keep an open mind to what's more than one SRO in, on each campus. What we have to do with hardening campuses, with providing for additional security, whether that be in the position of guardian or school safety officer, we need to look at those, because there's more work that has to be done. And I feel strongly the legislature is going to be making changes to the law this next year in order for school districts to better address and better fund some of the needs that we have. I think the, the part of this discussion that you're going to hear is a, is a good overview of where we are in our culture and in our, in our communities, and with the, somewhat, the breakdown of the family and the responsibility of the schools now that has to fill these needs and do all these different tasks, to, you know, there's a comment about fascination with guns, and a comment about, you know, protecting students with guardians, there's, there's comments about, you know, immediate response. And so, as you listen to this, I want, I want us to think about how we can take some of these comments, and you may not agree with them, agree with the comments, and a lot of them, you'll, I think you will agree with, but, I mean, there's even a comment about a video game, and some of the issues that I think we have to look at in our community with parents, and with a community involvement to look at, at violent video games. This is a discussion from a gentleman named Dr. Devin Smith, he's a FDLE senior crime analyst, he's a professor. He has studied the events of the last 20 years. The topic is on historically, historically what has happened in K through 12 schools with active assailant situations, and the things that have been learned from them. They went to a 20-year history that started in 1998, 1999 was Columbine, but they talk about these studies, these 46 targeted attacks on K to 12 schools involving 48 attackers. And this database, this data set is based on the school, an attack on the school, it's not on, not an attack on a single individual. There's a lot of violent acts that occur that are not going to be in this data set that Dr. Smith was talking to the commission about. There are, like I said, 11 commissioners speak, it started with Commissioner Mike Carroll, he's the secretary of the Florida Department of Children and Families, and then Sheriff Lutieri spoke, he's the chairman, as appointed by the governor, he's the sheriff of Pinellas County. You'll hear from Commissioner Justin Senior, Secretary of the Agency for Healthcare Administration in the state of Florida. Sheriff Grady Judd will speak, I sit right next to Grady Judd, he sits just to my right on the commission. Commissioner Melissa Larkin Skinner, she's the CEO and a licensed mental health counselor. Commissioner Ryan Petty, he's the father of Elena Petty, his daughter was killed at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School. Commissioner Desmond Blackburn, he's the superintendent, or was the superintendent of Broward County Schools, he's now resigned to take the CEO position of a nonprofit organization called the New Teachers Center. He's going to continue to serve on the commission. Sheriff Larry Ashley will speak, he's the Oakliss County Sheriff. Commissioner James Harkering, he's the under sheriff of Indian River County, he speaks. I have a few comments, a couple of questions, my focus at the time was on after-school events, and ironically, you know, we've had, since this meeting, we've had shootings at two high school football games, and we had another mass casualty event in Jacksonville that wasn't a school-related event, but my focus was on that and on active shooter drills. And then Commissioner Max Schacter, father of Alex, who also was killed, he speaks. And like I said, it's kind of a wide variety of discussion, but it'll be something that, board, that after it's over, I'd like us to have some conversation on how we, we may want to proceed and the message that we, that we may want to send. So, Ms. Sandrowski, if you could start the video.
Just a comment, I have another question. It struck me, listening to this presentation, that the landscape really changed following Columbine. And I know Commissioner Schacter's made this fact known, open openness, most of these things are really quick. If you look at the time from when it started to when it ended, it's minutes. And if you look at the time where active killing was taking place, it's even shorter than it is in about three or four minutes. So, I think when you, when we look at this thing, and I think we're going about it the right way, it's, it's, it's how, if you're going to respond to this, it needs to be an almost immediate response if you're going to stop and prevent death. And so, this whole idea that we're going to have school resource officers and guidance, whether you philosophically agree with it or not, you have to have a response within minutes, not tens of minutes. And so, I, I think that's good, the whole notion of hardening schools and slowing the person's access into the school, into the school, critically important, because the longer you can draw it out, the quicker the response can have an impact. But I think the other thing that the data shows is it's, as tragic as these things are, it's, it's still a rather rare phenomenon, because I'm looking, even in 20 years, I'm looking at this total kids, 0 to 18 that were involved, and so, I think, if my math is correct, it's 34 kids, 34 kids over 20 years, and I can tell you that during that time, we had tens of millions of kids in school. And so, to ever get a predictive model in terms of which of those tens of million is going to be the one in 34 is going to be difficult. I think the threat assessment teams are going to help diffuse violence in schools, whether it prevents all this, I don't know, and you never will know, by the way, if it does prevent the school shooting, because how do you know if it, if it never happens? Clearly, we have to improve the linkages that we have in the mental health system and integrate it into the school system to reduce those chances. But what I heard yesterday with the gentleman who came up and talked about the videos, I got to tell you, that if part of this isn't a societal issue, where we have the faith-based community and other communities stepping up, because part of this is a culture that should be desensitized our kids to violence, we've over glamorized guns, you know, I go to a Mission Impossible movie last week, and, and, and I can tell you, no man would survive one episode that you saw in that movie, he continues to live and jump off buildings and shoot folk. And we have totally desensitized our kids along the way to violence, fascination with guns, through video games, through TVs, and, and the only way you're going to change that, I believe, is through some type of community local response that, that focuses on those issues, makes more healthy environments for kids. So, I'm happy that partners, women, making a focus on making sure we have more immediate responses, we have, we're focused on hardening the schools, and then identifying those threats and responding to those threats in a proactive way, through a threat assessment team and through more integrated mental health services. But because of the lack of our ability to predict which kid out of the tens of millions would be the one kid who does this, it's not going to be perfect, and so, there's a lot of facets to this, that help the community understands that even when the work is done here, communities need to step up and really look at what we need to do to make it safe for our kids.
Yeah, I was going to, while you all go, and then save this comment for the end, but since Secretary Carroll raised it, I'm going to offer this at this point, because it goes along with what you're saying. If you look at slide, the slide on page 10, and very clearly says that of these incidents, what stopped them, in 18 of these cases, see, in 48 cases, 18 of them were stopped by civilian capture, and 18 of them were stopped by a teacher, a principal, a custodian, some personnel or somebody within the school, and as you just said, these are happening within minutes, within minutes. Probably, some of these are stopped before... Probably some of these are stopped before law enforcement officers are even dispatched. You know, given what we heard here, by the time somebody picks up the phone and calls 911 and it goes to Coral Springs, they do what they do with it and transfer it to BSO. BSO didn't see, go through that. These people are there. So when you see that the people who are stopping these predominantly are non-law enforcement personnel, the SROs aren't stopping these, and the cops aren't stopping these. And so when you couple that with, and this is a point of frustration for me, and I'm going to tell you it's a point of frustration because what I hear in our county and hear around Florida from a lot of people is, is that what they don't want. We need to have a discussion about what we may not want, but what is necessary and what is going to work. And what the data shows is the people who are stopping these things are these civilians, these non-law enforcement personnel. They're doing it in many of these cases. They're not armed. I can tell you that when people say, "I don't want armed teachers. I don't want guardians. I don't want to pay for more SROs. I don't want, I don't want..." What do you want? Can't have your cake and eat it too. Is that we've got to decide what works and what the data is showing here is what works is who can get to that person first. And so we've got to get off of this. Is it a great idea to arm all school personnel? Not in the perfect world that we don't live in, but we don't live in that perfect world. Is it a great idea to increase the village in a district so that they can pay for more SROs so we have two or three in a school with 3,000 kids as opposed to one? Somebody needs to make some of these hard decisions. And we've got to get off of this about what we don't want. I can tell you that in the Stoneman Douglas incident with Cruz, is that when he walked in there, and I've said this to you before, when he walked in there with that AR-15 and he confronted the one student who he shoot out, he assembled it with a magazine in it. There were only six rounds in that magazine. There were several other times when he was in that school that his gun was empty. There were several other times when school personnel saw him on the third floor. When Mr. Rasmarsky took all those kids to the west side to get them out of there is because Cruz was reloading. If he had somebody in there with a gun, they could have mitigated this. So this whole notion that we don't want guardians, we don't want armed personnel, we don't want, we don't want, we don't want more SROs, well, we want them, but we don't want to pay for them. And you see 18 of these were stopped by somebody other than a cop because we cannot be everywhere all the time. That's a fact of whether it's outside the schools, inside the schools, doesn't matter where it is, we are not going to be everywhere all the time. So it's something that is frustrating because you hear this throughout Florida now in all these districts and all these places about, "We don't want to fund this. We don't want to do that. We don't want to..." So we've got to come up with some suggestions, and I'm suggesting to the community is people need to change their mindset and figure out how to get this done that's consistent with who is stopping these things and the way that they can be stopped. Secretary Senior.
Just what you think, the numbers here are so, are so low that it is hard to actually draw broad conclusions from it, but I have the impression that all of the perpetrators were male. Is that correct?
Yes, all of them on a state basis, yes.
And is there, is there kind of rural, urban, suburban? Is there a sort of a socioeconomic profile at all?
I don't have the answer on socioeconomic profile, but the majority of these schools are suburban, the schools are rural.
Sheriff Jones next.
Sheriff Woltieri, I would say dead. I have, long before the guardians came about, I created the Sentinel program because I've looked at the same data. And Commissioner Carroll's right, except it's not minutes that count, it's seconds that count. And these school staff members are running in with no guns and confronting very violent people with every intention to kill all that they can. And to back up what Sheriff Woltieri said, I've asked this simple question over and over and over again to everyone, especially those who go, "I don't want guns. I don't want guns." Well, I don't want active shooters. If the active shooter is walking down the hallway and has made it through all of our layers of security and intervention, to walk to your child's classroom, to murder your child and all of his or her colleagues, do you want someone there well-trained with a firearm to stop them? And one SRO on the campus is not enough. And one guardian on the campus is not enough. The answer is obviously yes, but we've got to come to the reality that the school staff is scattered throughout that campus and they are going to be the first responders. We can't get there in time. And if you have one school resource officer and this individual plans his tactics and his is what's in the database, he's going to wait till the SRO is on the other end of the campus or he knows that the SRO or the guardian is down in one piece of the campus and has to sprint across the campus. Well, that SRO or guardian probably has to walk, run past 15, 20, 25 staff members of the school to get to the active shooter. We've got to recognize that this is a new world. It's a new time and it's a very rare event, but on those very rare occasions, we're going to have to have the right people at the right locations. And that means we've got to change our paradigm in the school systems and understand whether you like it or whether you don't. We've got to have a few well-trained people. And over the long term, that's going to equate to the staff that's already there on the payroll because you, to have a program, you've got to have accountability, affordability, and Well, we can't afford to put three or four or five police officers on every campus across this nation. We can't afford to put three or four or five guardians on every campus across this nation. But I'll promise you that in most every school district in this nation, and it would be rare, I can find very talented, very willing school staff and appropriately train them, call them guardians under our law, and provide them with the right resources at the right location for that unavoidable, unavoidable event when it occurs to make a difference. But, or we can keep doing what we've been doing in the past and watch children get slaughtered on campuses. And that's, and that's why I want to back up. Sheriff Woltieri said, "This is not something we like." But there's your facts. Dr. Smith has given us the data. Who's going to be the first one there? Who's going to intervene? And do you want to stop it before they kill more kids?
So in the next meeting, as I mentioned, you know, last time, we were going to watch some video perhaps, and this meeting, we don't have time, so that's why it's not on the agenda. I think we're going to get that next time. Keep this in mind when those of you decide to watch it, you want to watch the video next time and you see him reloading and you see that he's got an empty gun and you see where there's school personnel that could have shot him and killed him, but they couldn't because they didn't have it, is that there was no doubt in my mind from watching the video of inside Stoneman Douglas that if somebody had a gun, they could have easily taken him out and could have mitigated the deaths because there were several times when he had an empty gun. And there were opportunities for staff to intervene if they had been armed.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I think the thing, the two things you've talked about stood out the most for me. And one was the concept of systems thinking and how many small decisions that are really mistakes in hindsight come together and cause a tragedy. And it's very complex and I think that's one of the things we're faced with. And even an example we talked about yesterday with the city of Tamarack and that tower, they're making a decision in a vacuum and for, I don't, I don't even know why, since we haven't heard from them, but it's not looking at the bigger community, the bigger systems as a whole. And so that one decision could then be one of those mistakes that leads to a tragedy in the future. The other thing that stood out to me was the concept of lowering our threshold and we need to do that to create safer schools. We've lowered our threshold in settings such as airports. Why wouldn't we do it in schools when we're talking about our most precious resource? Our future really, which is our kids. And I think that part of it is that we spend so much time trying to protect individual rights and not label individuals and not make individuals feel bad that we don't want to make a false accusation. But I firmly believe that if we train people what to look for and really any unusual behavior, whether we can define that or somebody can define that or not, but anything that's out of the ordinary, we need to have a safe place where we can report that and not have any consequence and actually feel like someone's going to act on it, which is the other thing. It's not just about, do I trust the adults? It's about, is someone going to do something about it? Because that sense of learned helplessness, well, I'm not going to bother because nobody will do anything, is rampant. I just, I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to make those statements for consideration.
Commissioner Petty's next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the comprehensive look at this. Tough for me to look at some of this data, it's sort of, I know you had a job to do, it was a little personally tough for me to distill down into data what happened to my daughter that day, but thank you for the work. Couple of things stood out to me and I want to agree with what's been said by the other commissioners. Seconds matter. Data's telling us that whoever's on campus is in a, in a position to stop this, so we need to rethink that approach. What is clear from the data is the way we've been approaching this has not worked. It's not stopped these incidents of violence, so we've got to try something different. I'm intrigued by the leakage. I think ideally, in my mind, we stop these before they get on campus. And this idea that, you know, 80% of these violent actors tell somebody they're going to do it and whether it, whether it reaches the level of what happened at Stoneman Douglas or, or not, these acts of school violence are typically shared with somebody else. Somebody knows. So the ability to report that, see something, say something, I think is incredibly important. And I think we have to remove the stigma, particularly for the student body, because they think they are aware of these things. You know, they're aware of these attacks or potential attacks. They need to be, they need to feel safe to report these behaviors and these indicators. I want to, I also want to say that we are, we are starting to collect data on averted incidents of school violence. I'll just point to the Police Foundation website. They've got a website where they're collecting data now. It goes beyond just, you know, these severe incidents like Sandy's at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, but there are other school, acts of school violence that have been averted. We're starting to see data on those. So I, I do in fact think we can stop these and I think we can learn from the averted incidents as much as we learn from those that, that were unfortunately carried out. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Give us your white words next.
Sheriff, like you, I was going to save some of these comments towards the end, but since we're on the topic, not as a superintendent, as a lifelong educator, not surprised at all to see the high number of school personnel that intervene in these activities. Teachers and counselors and administrators and school district leaders are some of the most selfless people I've ever been around. As you all know, when the governor announced that he was going to allow the school staff to be armed, Bavar County was one of the few that seriously considered that while other district committed not to go that route. I spoke to many, many teachers, not the school staff, and they gladly wanted to arm themselves. The challenge was, we've already done, we've already put so much of ourselves into a profession. We've known for a couple of decades now that the current accountability structure will focus on these finite academic law-important measurements and, and not prioritizing the mental, social, emotional welfare of children. The educators have known that. So in it, we need a complete society, need a complete reset of what we expect from teachers, counselors, school and district leaders. As a parent and the parents who suffered this tragedy, I want my kids to come home every day and I want them to be happy mentally and physically. And if we're not going to prioritize that in how we train our teachers, select our teachers, evaluate our teachers and compensate our teachers, then we're not going to take the deepest dive into aggressive issues.
Sheriff Bashal's next.
Thank you. First, I wanted to ask if all these studies or cases had SROs in the school? I mean, we're talking about the difference in civilian interception versus law enforcement interception. Did all of these schools that are, that have these measures, do they have SROs?
The answer to that is no, but I can't.
You have a ratio of how many?
I may be able to identify that for you and get it back to you.
Well, just for the commission's sake, I wanted to, you know, yes, there's a lot of civilian interception, but it's only because there was a lack of law enforcement there to begin with. There was a responding rather than being there. I would take note that in this case, we did have a guy with a gun there, a good guy, who did not act for whatever reason. And the second point, I would disagree with it, with my good friend, that we can't afford to have a law enforcement officer and multiple law enforcement officers or guardians of these schools, and I would argue that we can't afford not to. That if we can't protect our kids, I don't know how society functions outside of that first and foremost basic parental responsibility, society responsibility. And every teacher and counselor that I've ever spoken with seemed to know who the killer is well before we did. So I would suggest that there is some data out there, there is some means by which to identify who these would-be shooters will be. And that's the points I would like to make.
So what we're doing, after we come back from the break, we're going to get into some of that because some of the questions there, Sheriff Ashley, are not just, you know, whether there was a school resource officer, but whether enough school resource officers. And even if you take the Stoneman Douglas situation and what Peterson didn't do, because remember at that campus on that day, there were, there was no SRO at Westlake because he was off. And you had one SRO on that entire campus. So for roughly 3,000 kids, a sprawling campus, you had one. And one of the things that we're going to ask the question of you about when we come back from the break and we'll take us into the next meeting where we start formulating this, what is the appropriate role of the SRO? So as you raised, the question is, is that was there one on campus? But if he's in a classroom or she's in a classroom teaching and you've got a campus monitor sees something, they're not going to get there in time. So all of that has to be, I suggest, part of the discussion. What, do we, are we okay with the current role of the SROs or does that role need to change? And if we're going to ask them to keep doing the same things they've been doing, which is mentoring kids, relationships, teaching, doing all the things, then how are they going to add, will we provide the security function? Which then begs the question is, is that can we pay and are we willing to pay to have more, especially on campuses that have 2,000 and 3,000 kids on them? Because having one is nothing more than fieldwork because they can't get the job done. So we'll come back. So that's going to lead into this, a segue into the next one. Commissioner Harkering's next.
I think the commission has a unique opportunity.
I think the commission has a unique opportunity at this time, in light of the fact that, though it's in 2019, there's going to be a legislative session, to talk about the importance of, uh, resources, resources being funded. And unfortunately, I think the reality is, is we know that there will be another mass casualty event. I hate to say it, but we know it's going to occur. Uh, history is, uh, is true. The only thing that we can do, I think, as a commission, is make some definitive statements about what kind of resources can be dedicated to the locations that we're talking about. Let's not forget, these are our children. Uh, whether they're biologically ours or not, they're all ours. They're our most precious resource. And what can we do to mitigate that on site? And we've already mentioned a few things, which is, uh, training the staff, having enough personnel. But through the training of the personnel, having sufficient personnel, law enforcement or otherwise, and I think law enforcement personnel are important, uh, comes back to the practical thing of cost. And, and much of cost is willingness. What are the people who ultimately hold the purse strings, not willing to do and willing to say, uh, is their priority? What's their value judgment? What do they value in regards to funding? And, uh, I'm, uh, just overwhelmed in some ways with, with anger and incredulity when I hear, uh, finance people and county administrators tell sheriffs, tell state law enforcement personnel, tell school districts that their unwillingness, Sheriff Collier mentioned, to, uh, heaven forbid, adjust the milage rate, to ask people to pay to protect the most valuable resources that we have. And it becomes a value judgment. And if we don't make those defined, strong statements in our recommendations for the legislature to address in the beginning of 2019, uh, to be followed up thereafter, then I think we're doing a disservice to all the children that, uh, that we really need to think about protecting.
Mr. Dodd.
Thank you for the great information. I do have a couple of questions on the commonalities. Is there, from what you've said, there's no commonality on the time of day, the day of the week, or the time of the year that these incidents take place, correct?
They vary widely.
Okay. But yet, we have not seen an incident, a mass casualty incident happen at an after-school event? Is that correct?
The shooting that I mentioned, where the assigned officer killed the attacker at the prom, was an after-school event. Um, but it, there were a couple of minor injuries, but because the officer acted and killed the shooter before he could be effective, he had posted up outside that prom, which was after-school, in order to do that. Now, having said that, there is school violence that occurs at football games, at off-campus dances, at assemblies of students who leave high school and go other places. Um, that's not here because it's not considered targeted violence. So, you know, I don't want to leave you with the impression that there, that violence can't occur, including shooting and death, um, between even, you know, rival students from outside that school. Those are not what we're looking at here, although that sort of violence is also relatively minor, it does occur.
Certainly. And I know that the districts take that seriously, our district does. I think that would be something we don't want to lose sight of. I also think about summer schools, uh, when, uh, school districts have summer schools, they may not have it at all the campuses, but some of the campuses, that would be an area that, that maybe we should discuss when we talk about, um, the SRO ratios and how, uh, officers, uh, are assigned, uh, at those schools. I would like to say, my hopes are that the active shooter drills that we have in the Senate bill, that we will be required to, uh, to have, will help our school staff realize their importance in, um, protecting students. And so, I think that in our district, the work with law enforcement and the active shooter drills and the way that's going to go about is going to be, um, a good thing.
Good, thank you. Uh, Mr. Shafter, then, uh, I think we'll take a break after your question.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you very much, Dr., uh, very upsetting to hear all this news, but it's important that the public does. Um, I have several comments and several questions. Um, I think, as far as what I would like to see out of our commission, is a couple of things that have been brought to light here. I think it's extremely important that we empower our teachers, train our teachers, um, in self-defense, uh, especially in light of the fact that they are unfortunately going to be the, the first responders, uh, with the ability to stop these shootings. The more you train, the more you build confidence and you give teachers the ability to act and save lives. Whether or not we recommend to train all teachers in Run High Fight or an Alice, I think that's very, very important. Uh, number two is that I would like to make a recommendation in our report that all school districts have a reporting or tip line. Um, one of the things that I think, uh, could have possibly, you know, stopped this is, is if we had a tip line in Broward County. There, uh, there is a tip line, we didn't really get into that in this commission, but it's called Safe to Tell. Uh, you spoke about that, Dr., in Colorado. They have stopped many shootings, many suicides, and, uh, has, has been the gold standard. Hopefully, uh, that will be in about twenty-one states soon. Um, so, and actually, uh, Susan Payne, who is, who developed that, will be presenting, along with myself, the Federal, uh, Commission on School Safety at the White House, August sixteenth. Uh, number three, in light of the fact that weapons have been, you know, stolen from parents, I, I'm in favor of our commission making a recommendation that all guns be properly stored and, and locked, uh, to try to prevent this from happening, and that there be penalties, uh, if that doesn't happen. Um, concerning my questions, have interoperability, uh, did you find it be a mitigating factor in other casualties, uh, like it was in Marjorie Stoneman Douglas?
Mr. Shafter, could you explain interoperability a little further for me?
Well, I mean, it, I know that, you know, we had radio problems here to the extent that, uh, the DSO and Coral Springs could not communicate the head-use hand signals. I was just curious, is that a prevalent factor that you found in your research in all these other shootings?
It was prevalent in the commission recommendations from prior commissions.
Um, and, and this might, this is a question to the law enforcement personnel, and maybe I don't know, but NIMS is the, uh, command structure for the fire service, and I hear that that's extremely successful. Um, do we have something that, like that in law enforcement?
Yes. Everybody uses it.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, uh, that the news that came out yesterday that children were found in, in the New Mexico compound that were training for school shootings, even though, uh, you know, I feel all of these attacks on schools are domestic terrorism. Are, are you surprised that we haven't had multiple attacks on a school at the same time? And are you fearful that we need to be prepared for that? Doctor?
Uh, surprised and fearful are the wrong words for me, uh, in relationship to answering that. Is it possible? Certainly, the international data says that schools have been attacked by terrorists. The data related to terrorists and their publications online and in the internet makes children in some terrorist organizations and not in others legitimate targets. Um, so the question is, will they be a soft target that a terrorist chooses in the United States that is a homegrown vile extremist versus another target? That's going to be unique to that particular terrorist, but there is certainly evidence outside of the United States that it occurs.
Thank you. Um, I have always been, uh, you know, curious as to when I.
Stop right here. So you got here at the end there from Max Shafter, uh, the father of Alex, and, um, you know, I really, uh, listened carefully to Ryan Petty and to Max Shafter's comments because they're living this nightmare. And, uh, so I appreciate their comments, and, uh, he obviously covered a lot. He was going on to talk a little bit about MS-13 and some, some instances up in, in the northern states with gang violence at schools. And so there was more, he had, he had some more to say, but I didn't, um, just wanted to stop it here, uh, for the sake of time and to be able to have a little discussion here, uh, with Ward, um, and with Superintendent Semore. You know, where we're going next and, uh, what, you know, what you gleaned from this thirty-four-minute snapshot of the meeting. Um, again, you know, there were a lot of comments, a lot, I thought it was a good kind of a cross-section, a good topic for us, but, um, what are your thoughts on, uh, on what was discussed, or if you have any comments?
I should probably thank you for your service. Yes, you spend hours down there, and so I, I appreciate you bringing this back to us. I think we've heard a lot of the things that we've discussed here in, in this board. And the one thing that, um, still points out to me is that the relationship that these SROs have with our kids, and the kids are telling them things and we, they have, we have prior knowledge of a lot of things that are going on in this county because the kids have this relationship with their SROs, the teachers and the administrators. And I still think that's one of the factors that has kept our school safe. Um, we also said at this meeting, you know, that a child is going to be killed before an SRO can get there, because that's, that's going to push the button, so I appreciate that. I was impressed because we've been told that the Guardian program was not vetted in, that I heard it over and over again, and so that's kind of piqued my interest, um, into the Guardianship. I still, I understand there might be school personnel that we could put in harm's way, but I, I still not going to put a gun in a teacher's hand.
Mr. Shafter, can you give the mic?
I was interested in what you said about the apparent role of the SRO. And I, I always suspected or thought that perhaps we put too much expectations and teach these core classes and make sure you guard at the door and all that. So maybe it is time we take a look, like you're talking about other people, perhaps fulfilling certain things, and the SROs would focus on what is of many purposes, but what I see is the safety of the school. So, that would be a good thing, that you reexamine the role and maybe make it a good time and make sure that safety is the primary thing that the SRO is charged with and not, uh, other things.
Right. And, you know, that's, I think part of what I, I've talked about is that, you know, we have an SRO, they can still do some of those duties and build those relationships and teach the classes, but, you know, like Sheriff Collier said, you know, what are they doing when they're in the classroom, they're not out, you know, protecting? Well, that's why we look at another option with the Guardian program. And that's why we look at hiring, if, you know, and I know this counsel's, you know, talks about, you know, guns in teachers' hands and those things, but we could hire, um, a, a guardian that would be trained, that would not be a sworn law enforcement officer. They would not be handling criminal cases. They would be their sole way to protect children in case of a violent act or an active assailant situation on campus. My vision is, you know, not just one SRO, but, you know, some schools may have one SRO and two, three guardians. I don't know. Um, you know, and we're going to be making recommendations for the commission as on, on how these things look. And that's why at our last meeting, I want your feedback, and I appreciate your comments on how we can, uh, what I can take back to the commission. That's right.
I've heard big things about the ALIS program back home. I'm a little, I'm, I'm, could you help me with this? I'm confused about the Guardian, because if, um, a custodian, could a custodian be a guardian at the same time as a custodian? Or, or a librarian, they don't have those anymore either, whatever, media specialist.
Media specialist, they cannot specialize, they cannot, it has the, the kind of beautiful time structure. Right. The law, the law, I think, specifically, a retired law enforcement officer on campus, a ROTC instructor could, an administrator who's not have, does not have classroom duties, and, and well as a coach, that's not a side question. So, but could that be the case? I mean, you know, for other, um, you know, staff members to be armed, like a custodian? I mean, that would be something.
People that are already there every day?
Well, it's the administration's program, the hybrid guardian program, that we created, or, the outskirts of a guardian, and hire, usually texted, or, or, law enforcement to actually act as a guardian.
Don't we have to have a relationship in the, okay, in the county sheriff's, though, to do a guardian program?
The way the law is probably created, the sheriff best to prove the guardian program in the school, and make the argument.
You said no guardians several times.
That is correct. Yes, I see, yes. Yeah, he, right. But I, you know, I do want to say that that's why I think, uh, our board should look at this and, and make a recommendation or ask for the sheriff to provide us with the options of having a guardian. Now, we're in a workshop, so we can't make that in motion, it's not an agenda. I don't, that's something I think we should look at. And what I was hoping for is that if we can see that we agree that there is a need of a protector that is there for an active sailor, and that person would go through the Guardian training, as it's now written, that I am in favor of that. Um, and I think from the commission meeting, uh, you can see, and I got to tell you, these first couple of meetings, it wasn't like this, but as the data and as all the information's come in, as we digest it and we've gone through it, it, it looks like that's, um, the, the trend of a lot of people on the commission, or the thinking of a lot of people on the commission.
One of the, there are a couple of things, though, as I was taking notes, is, I think the ALIS training is definitely a step in the right direction. That, that, from every level, from the administrative, from the district, from the teachers and certain others, and the students, and the feedback I think we have gotten has affirmed that, that that is a step in the right direction. I have not, I cannot recall of one negative response that I have, I have gotten from students, staff, and parents. The other big thing that I think, um, that what I'm seeing that the commission's doing is that it is truly about embeddedness, about, and I guess it's as simple to say that the good gun being embedded into the school system, uh, into the school. And the role of the sheriff, of the, of the sheriff, the SRO, is, is, becomes very complex because, as you said, Mr. Dodd, how do you, you have the skill set, the authority, the information of that, let's say the expertise of that SRO. Could another service be provided by another individual? I, um, I have, you know, as, as you know, my wife's a teacher, and, and I would agree with Ms. Counsel. I, I would not be at this moment, um, ready to say I'm, I'd like to arm teachers. I don't have to make that decision, statute's already decided that. So at the moment, statute's not going to permit that anywhere. So, so that, that part I feel like's covered. But if you ask me, um, are we going to not have, that depends on campus. Are we not going to have AEDs? Are we not going to train people in CPR? Or we're just going to hope we don't have a problem? I would say that would be ignorant and inappropriate. And so I do bring myself and remind myself that I do think that this board needs to take a position and make a resolution on Guardians in support of that. And I think we can do that in a way that affirms the protection of the concerns that we have. Um, and I think a lot of us can express that. I am sorry, I want another person on that campus protecting my child and my wife. I want, when I'm on campus, someone else that has a gun, that has that training and is willing to. I know I've been in this boardroom, when we've had incidences, and there have been people that are, are caring, that are not necessarily active law- that are caring, that are not necessarily active law enforcement, but they have the rights and the ability to do it. And I will tell you, I sit more comfortable here, knowing those people are here, or knowing that they are probably in this room. I am not ready to arm teachers, but we don't have to support a guardian. We can be very specific, maybe in this board's position, of what that guardian resolution looks like. But I think we owe it to our legislators to inform them where this board sits. I think we owe it to the public, and I think that we need to make it very clear we are open and ready to move forward with that. Because whether we have a police chief that's having some role in that, or whether we have a contract with the sheriff's department or any other law enforcement agency, guardians have got to be a part of the future if we really want to provide protection. The state of Israel, and that's another piece that I think that what I heard them talk about, it really has to do with a mindset and change in how they live every day. And I remember when 9/11 happened, the Israeli people said, you'll be surprised how quickly you readjust, you'll be surprised how you make changes in their life, and you'll be surprised how you'll be able to move forward in protecting yourselves. But we did have to make a lot of changes, and I do think the way the state of Israel has had to approach things is not simply by building higher walls, higher fences. That I think is, though, one of the issues that's interesting. Is hardening as effective as embeddedness? We can put higher walls in, and our kids are still going to be dismissed at some point and vulnerable, but if there is some, another guardian there to protect them, at some point we have some protection. I am willing to-
And so, and I appreciate that. And so would the board be willing to put that as an agenda item at the next meeting so that we can discuss?
Absolutely.
All right. So we will-
And Mr. Dodd, I think you, and the board can, you know, support, not support this, but I do think you've had a sense of where this board, the pulse of this board has been on this, the Guardian issue. I don't see any problem with you outlining some resolution language of what that might look like to present as part of that, so that, because, because I do think that, you know, we need to act on this sooner rather than later, especially as committees are going to be starting to meet here very soon.
And you know, Ms. Bryant mentioned that the ALIS training, these things that are new to our district, that we have gone in on and we had some great responses to that tonight, and so I'm glad to see the district work on that and the response from people and even parents, I think, has been very strong. We also have to start assessment teams, and we've talked about that in our last meeting, what's in place now to look at children who may be identified. And, you know, Melissa Larkin Skinner, when she was talking about this afraid to offend an individual, kind of at risk of the whole group, I mean, we have to be very much aware of that, and whether they're an ESE student or not, we have got to address the behavior, and we've got to address the threat. And, you know, if there is an issue with their status as a special education student, you know, it can't be at the risk to the entire group. And we've had a discussion on that. I feel comfortable with what Mr. Muller, Mrs. Hemel, and Sheriff were talking about that, how that process works. And a lot of, and those are things that we can openly share because they deal with confidential information. But even if there is a child who is identified as an ESE, a special education child, their behavior, they're going to be held accountable for their behavior, and if there's a threat to other students, it's going to be a risk. And so, you know, that is important to me, and we talk about looking at systems as a whole. Mike Carroll started out with this community, this, what's the local response going to be in the community? And I've invited some people to be here today. I appreciate all of you coming out to listen to this because this is the key, it's going to be to get stakeholders in the community to realize where we have to go to protect students in our schools and to be on board with it and to work with the school district, work with the individual schools. You know, our individual schools have school safety teams or committees now, and, you know, that we get involved with those school safety, the faith community, you know, that was even mentioned, let's get the faith community involved, look at the societal issues that we're dealing with. I am, I am interested in this violent video game connection, and even though we can't say that there's a profile, we have to look at what these past assailants have been involved with, and we have to make sure parents know the importance of staying on top of what their child, what their children are looking or wanting, what games are playing, and what they're being involved with. So those are, those are our things. You know, I think Sheriff Judd may have said something about affordability and sustainability. You know, not only do we have to be able to afford it, we have to be able to sustain it. I hope that legislative session this time will look at some more opportunities for funding. If we get on board with the Guardian program, we already know there's funding there that we can look at. And so I, you know, would like to, you know, I've spoken to Sheriff Prendergast, I've told him my view on this, and I'd ask him to relook at his view on the Guardian program. And I'm hoping that if we make a resolution, like Mr. Kenny said, if we work on something, we send this message, that we can make this work, that the sheriff will be on board.
It is important to ask the sheriff to consider the Guardian program, because I do believe in the last note from the sheriff, should we ask him to consider that?
I think we, I think, I think maybe that's a second part. I think this board needs to make a statement and a resolution on the Guardian program of where it stands. And I think the two parts to that is to then ask our local sheriff, because that statute requires the Guardian program to do that. But I think it also is to then, if we do approve that resolution, to share that with our legislators, so, and any other legislators, to say, we are a district that is among the other districts that are supporting this, and we are needing assistance in how we can improve this. Is that, would that be correct?
I agree, I agree.
And I would like to just go back to what Mr. Dodd was saying about the parent involvement, and I appreciate all of you being here, too, because this is the biggest audience I've had since I've been here two years now. But I have to compliment our superintendent and assistant superintendent because after Stoneman, we had several of our students involved in what they, they didn't mean it. It was just a joke, and parents in tears because we were disciplining their children. And so the community involvement is going down to our homes and our students and our parents who come before this board and want their child excused because he really didn't mean it, you know, the gun and stuff like that. And I have to compliment our administration because they stood firm that those children were disciplined, even if the parents said it was a joke and they didn't mean it and stuff like that. But Mrs. Hemel disciplined every one of them, I think there were like 13, and so the bunch. And so we take our code of conduct very, very seriously, and I think the community needs to support us when we do suspend the children, expel the children, because we do have costs, and we try to be very, very fair. But when the community says, oh, well, you know, not going to happen in Citrus County, I'd like to say, we have school of choice and go someplace else, Mr. Judd.
Yes, Mrs. Schacter.
What we're talking about right now shows that we have backup plans, we do not put our eggs in one basket and hope for the best. We have a plan, we have a plan behind the plan, usually about three plans to back up everything we do to try to make everything go right.
Mr. Dodd, I noticed this Stoneman Douglas school itself has been going through a lot of fluctuation in how they're looking at security. There was a lot of initial plans, there have been modifications to those, and in some cases, complete reversals.
Yes.
But I don't know that I've seen embeddedness changed. I think embeddedness in some fashion, whether it's a guardian, whether it's SROs, whether it's private security, that seemed to be the more consistent part.
I would say-
The perimeter issues, the single access issues, the hardening issues seem to be the ones that are more in flux. Is that-
Well, I think the only issue, the biggest issue is over the MELs, actually.
The MELs, yeah.
You know, and the fact that, you know, logistically, they couldn't get all the students in school in time and go through a TSA type screen. So, you know, that was one of the issues that they had, now, I'm talking about, this is their school, right? This has not been discussed that I remember at the Margers, Stoneman Douglas.
That was my question, not just that one, I mean, in general, is-
Right.
Because, and I know this is only one snip of 30 minutes of a lot. What is the approach of hardening? Because, you know, you have a segment of the community that I think wants to feel more comfortable by saying, well, if you do this, it would accomplish that. And I use the example of the automobile. We've had so many accidents over the years, I don't know of any of us that probably drive around an automobile that doesn't have an airbag in it or doesn't have other safety features, because we know those save lives. We don't have enough data, unfortunately, with the school systems to say, if we do this, it will result in this. But is the commission looking at that, those aspects? Because I do think districts need guidance.
Yes, yeah, the commission is, is looking at those hardening ideas and thoughts. You know, Nicholas Cruz took an Uber to Margers, Stoneman, Douglas, and walked through to a building without going through any fences or areas that were secured. And so obviously, there is a big focus on hardening, and we know that our Florida Safe School Assessment Tool that we've done on all of our campuses is going to be used to determine what funding we get for hardening. And, you know, Mr. Bishop and Ms. Cernich and that team has been on top of that. I mean, we are not missing any deadlines, we're getting these things done early, and I applaud them for that. And so we'll be finding out more, I think, is it December 1st? Or when do we find out on funding, Mr. Bishop? Do they-
As far as the grant, when we hear back from the grant?
Yes.
We're in the process of applying for the grant right now, and December 1st is a target for it.
Right, December 1st. So-
And then is it based, or based on whatever formula that they assign?
Well, yeah, that's kind of interesting because the Department of Education has to determine the formula, and I don't really have that information, and the Commission of Education sits on the Margers, Stoneman, Douglas Commission, but I haven't got a lot of information on that, so.
Yeah, we recently received the information that we're eligible for up to $530,000 in grant money toward hardening.
Come on up to the microphone if you're there. But obviously, we don't know the formula for that, do we?
No, I don't know exactly how that was calculated, no, sir. But as I just said off the microphone here, we were recently notified that we're eligible for up to $530,000 for school hardening measures. As the board knows, we completed the Florida Safe School Assessment Tool. Mrs. Cernich came before the board and told you that was a part of Senate Bill 726, that we had to complete these assessments, these security assessments. Those security assessments, along with the assessments that we went ahead and conducted through FSBIT, will be the driving force behind the needs outlined in the grant application process.
And that's a one-time hardening, based on the information that you've done through your assessments, through the tools?
That's my understanding.
And then as long with the third-party evaluations?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you all, and I'm glad we've had a good discussion on this. I appreciate the members of public that come out here today to listen to this. We are going to start a special meeting now. There's not a lot of items on the agenda for the special meeting, but I tell you what I would like to do is, I would like to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, so let's go ahead and, well, actually, I'm going to adjourn the workshop, I do believe, Kenny. All right, I'm going to adjourn the workshop and start back.